Good evening, everybody. It is seven thirty P M on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I'd like to call to order the May fourteenth meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you will please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is advanced, one nation, from under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dirk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez. Ms. DeJolcy Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Seab.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
President.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Mr. Lopez. Fourteen we have a forum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Opposed? Abstentions. We have two abstentions, Ms. DeJolcy Eichner, three, Ms. Murray, Ms. DeJolcy Eichner, and Mr. Goldstein. Public participation, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? I'm seeing none. James, do we have anybody online that wishes to address the council?
Okay. Thank you very much. We will close public participation. Next, we have no resignations and appointments this evening. I do want to say that last week, we did meet with the leadership of the Republican Town Committee to start discussing, working together to finding people who may want to serve on various boards and commissions. A very productive meeting, and I think we'll get it. They've made some recommendations that we're considering at this point, so. So Mayor's remarks, really, I think all of you know that last week or the week before, we had a horrible situation in the city of Norwalk where we had an accident on the Route Seven and I ninety-five area that ended up in a horrible fire and the actual destruction, well, it was the compromising the integrity and the structural integrity of the Fairfield Avenue overpass over I ninety-five. I think what I'm most amazed at is the turnaround time of opening up I ninety-five, and I think most people were as well. And there are so many people to thank, you know, shortly after eight o'clock in the morning, I received a telephone call from the governor. Told me that they're going to get everybody down here and do everything they possibly can to get things back to normal. Within two minutes, we had the fire department on scene, working on the fire. It was a working fire. It was an absolute disaster. The oil tanker went up in huge flames. Shortly after that, King Industries arrived on scene with their foam truck and did so much to help make sure that the fire didn't spread. They also, the foam they used did not have PFAS, and as a result of that, nothing went into the water, but also, as you recall, near exit fifteen, southbound, they have a retention pool that they built, the Department of Transportation, and anything that was put on the side on the road, the water, the foam, everything went into that retention pond, so nothing went into the Norwalk River into the sound. So I really have to thank the Norwalk Fire Department, the Norwalk Police Department, Connecticut Department of Transportation, King Industries, it was just, and, and like I said, Governor LaBott was just right there, came down, made sure that everything was moving forward, so I really, it was just a remarkable thing. And I also want to thank the residents and businesses in the city of Norwalk who are very patient. They understood that this is something that happens and that we'd have to get through, but in the remarkable turnaround time, eighty, less than eighty hours, and I think most of us were probably watching the live cam and watching that bridge being demolished and watching that, those great big set of scissors that cut through the beams, just amazing how everything went together. And again, I just, there's so many people to thank and just, it was just a wonderful thing that could have been a lot worse, and thank God. Thank God that nobody was hurt or worse. And certainly, the Biden and Harris administration and Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg, who initially off their, released three million dollars in emergency funds. So based on that, I think we can feel comfortable that there'll be more funds coming, and this will not be something that falls on the back of Connecticut residents alone. Anyway. Also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, time to raise new awareness and reduce the stigma around surrounding mental health issues. City of Norwalk has a longstanding commitment to helping people overcome mental health issues, and we work closely with our community providers to provide, to support the efforts, and Lamont Daniels, leading the charge, does a great, great job. Also, May is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and a time to recognize the incredible contribution that Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islander Americans have made to our history. May is also Haitian Heritage Month. May is Haitian Heritage Month, a time to honor the rich culture, the cultural, history, art, food, and people of Haitian descent. We will be raising the Haitian flag on Saturday at ten thirty A M. at Heritage Wall in honor, in honor of the contributions that Haitian community has made to our, to Norwalk and our nation. Let's not forget that this is a very special month regarding Memorial Day and the Shay McGrath Memorial Ceremony we have. Memorial Day, obviously, we have the Norwalk Memorial Day Parade. The day before that, on Sunday, we have the Raiton Memorial Day Parade. All council people and others, elected officials are invited to participate and to march and pay tribute to our heroes, our military people that lost their lives serving the country. At one P M. on Sunday, I'm sad, the Sunday before the Memorial Day Parade, we gather to pay honor to our Medal of Honor recipients in Norwalk. We have two of them. A city this size having two Medal of Honor recipients is quite amazing, and if you have not had the time to read why they received those medals of honors, medals of honor, I would ask that you do that because what they did was just absolutely amazing and sacrificing their lives to save the lives of many of their comrades who were under fire. McGrath during World War Two and Shay during Vietnam War. So join us at Cat Pasture Beach. It's always a wonderful ceremony, and it's something that we should be doing. And that's all I have, and I will now turn it over to our council president, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a comment on what you said about the incident that happened with the bridge. I think, I think Jen McMurray, the floor committee, you are working closely with the Fire and Police Department, and so I thank you for all of that, and I know that that must have been a pretty tough time to just be in charge of that and hearing all that that was going on. So we appreciate you cheering that, and we appreciate, was it firefighter, correct, that saved someone? Was it whoever the pedestrian?
Yeah, we will be, we will be recognizing that individual who pulled, the, the young man in the car pulled him out of the car. And I will mention today also, and we did recognize the two, well, actually, there were four heroes that up on May, up on Route Seven, behind Center Seven, there was a fire, and there was a person who might have been homeless on fire, and they ran down and pulled him out and saved his life, and we honored them today in the atrium.
Absolutely. I mean, that's the least we could do for folks who've stepped in like that and tried to be there for folks. And so we've just got good people in Norwalk, and maybe they weren't in Norwalk, but thank you to them for being there. I mean, it could have been a lot worse, so we appreciate.
Absolutely.
Um, so just want to say that for the D P W, they wanted to just recognize the folks who volunteered to clean up for the Arbor Day Cleanup Event for the Norwalk River Valley Trail that happened on April twenty-fourth, and so they just are appreciative of that. And again, it speaks to Norwalkers loving where they live, and so that is what that is when we put in our time that way. So we just want to honor them and say thank you, and thank you to everyone around the table who participated.
Absolutely.
And next, we're going to have Ms. Shanahan read the consent.
Thank you very much. Seven, A, Land Use and Building Management Committee. One, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Connecticut Materials Testing Laboratory, Inc., for materials testing and field inspection services for the South Norwalk Elementary School for a total not to exceed one hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars, plus a contingency allowance of thirty thousand dollars to cover actual testing and inspection services performed. Funds are available in the account noted. Number two, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Connecticut Materials Testing Laboratory, Inc. for materials testing and field inspection services for the Norwalk High School for a total not to exceed five hundred ten thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars eighty cents, plus a contingency allowance of fifty thousand dollars. Funds are available in the account noted. Number three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents for the application, acceptance, and implementation of a grant from HUD, Community Project Funding, for the proposed Norwalk Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street in the amount of two million dollars. Four A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Titan Enterprises for the Norwalk Concert Hall Terrace Stairs and ADA Ramp Improvement Project for a total not to exceed three hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. Funds are available from the accounts noted. Four B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on the contract for a total not to exceed thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, account noted. Five, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Northeast Generator Company for emergency generator preventive maintenance services for three years at City Hall, Health Department, Fire Headquarters, Police Headquarters, Eldon Main Library, and Public Works Center Garage for a total not to exceed twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Fundings available in various building operating accounts. B, Public Works Committee. One, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute the first supplemental project authorization letter for state project number one oh two dash two nine five, I ninety-five median reconstruction and resurfacing for the city of Norwalk's remaining demand deposit for the construction of Yankee Doodle Trail in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars in accordance with the Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects between the City of Norwalk and the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation accounts noted. Two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a no-cost First Amendment to the June thirteen, twenty twenty-three agreement between the City of Norwalk and I Recycle, Inc., D B A, I Recycle, L L C, for collection and recycling of glass bottles and cans by a pop-up event in the City of Norwalk. C, Community Services Committee. One A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds from the Connecticut Department of Public Health for the Immunization Action Plan Program in the amount of one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars for the period July one, twenty twenty, to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. One B, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to implement the Immunization Action Program, Play-In Program, for the period July one, twenty twenty, to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. D, Recreation Parks Cultural Affairs Committee. One A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a contract with the Lloyd Design Studio, P L L C, for project number four three five eight, Urban Grant Improvements Trail Design and Development in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, account is noted. One B, authorize the director of Recreation and Parks to issue change orders on the contract with the Lloyd Design Studio, P L L C, for project four three five eight, Urban Grant Improvements Trail Design and Development in an amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, account noted. E, Economic and Community Development Committee. One, resolution authorizing the mayor to participate in the Brownfield Municipal Grant Program to support the environmental remediation and redevelopment of fifty-five M L K Drive Webster Street Lot. Whereas, pursuant to C G S Section thirty-two, Just seven six three, the Connecticut Department of Economic Community and Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects and, whereas, it's desirable and in the public interest of the City of Norwalk and the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency, make an application to the state for three million dollars in order to undertake the fifty-five M L K Webster Street Lot Brownfield Cleanup Project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of Norwalk that one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by C G S Section thirty-two dash seven six three. Two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the City of Norwalk and the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency in an amount not to exceed three million dollars is hereby approved, and that Mayor Harry Rilling is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the City of Norwalk. Two, resolution authorizing the mayor to participate in the Community Investment Fund twenty thirty program to support the redevelopment of fifty-five M L K Drive Webster Street Lot. Whereas, pursuant to C G S Section thirty-two dash two eight five A, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects and, whereas, it's desirable and in the public interest that the City of Norwalk and Norwalk Redevelopment Agency make an application to the state for eight million dollars in order to undertake the fifty-five M L K Webster Street Lot Community Investment Fund Project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of Norwalk, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions, prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by C G S Section thirty-two dash two eight five A. Two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the City of Norwalk and Norwalk Redevelopment Agency in an amount not to exceed eight million dollars is hereby approved, and that Mayor Harry Rilling is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the City of Norwalk. Three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a contract with Placer Labs, Inc. for a data software unlimited license in the amount of thirty-four thousand via sole source, account noted. That is the consent calendar.
Ms. Shanahan. We've heard the consent calendar. Michelle Foul, by raising of the hands, on favor? And I believe it's unanimous.
Thank you.
That concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Now we will go to seven E for Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So seventy-four reads, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a three-year contract with two one-year extension options with ARC Soundstage Lighting, L L C, in the amounts of ninety-two thousand five hundred and ten dollars for year one, ninety-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars for year two, and a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for year three for purchasing projects. Four three four one are stage lighting and sound services, account numbers noted. I'd like to move this item and just briefly speak to it.
You have the floor, Mr. Goldstein. The item has been moved.
So just as a brief introduction, this item is pretty straightforward. It's a contract with a soundstage, with a ARC, which is a Norwalk business, it's a soundstage and lighting company, to help us put on three events that were incredibly popular last year, the Halloween Night Fair on Washington Street, the Holiday Extravaganza, and the Wall Street Wonderland. We, these are, these special events are important to our community. They are important to a lot of families and community members for which they have derived great enjoyment, and they have good reason for doing so, and putting on events with strong production value is not only important to increase economic development for businesses throughout the city and to get businesses involved and bring in revenue, but also to have and inspire joy in people's lives, and a lot of these events are things that people really look forward to. I certainly look forward to them. And so we wanted to take this opportunity and with the Business and Development Tourism Team to talk a little bit about special events, and so with us tonight is Jessica Bonnashack, our Director of Economic Community Development, Sabrina Guedeski, our Director of Business Development Tourism, and Anna Briel, our Special Event Cornerier, is going to be doing a presentation tonight on special events. She did a really wonderful version of this presentation at the Economic and Community Development Committee Meeting, and so, Anna, are you, are you on? Are you ready to roll?
Hi, everyone. This is Jessica. Anna and Sabrina are on as attendees. Can they please be moved over to panelists?
Anna Briel.
Anna Briel.
Hi, everyone. I'm on now. All right.
We can hear you.
All right, great. I'm just going to share my screen so I can share that presentation. One second. All righty. Thank you so much for having me on here so I can talk about what we've been doing for the past year because I'm almost a year old in the city, so yeah, I'm excited to delve into the world of events and how they are pivotal in shaping a city. I'm just taking a closer look into the agenda today. There's a lot to cover, so I'm going to try to make it as quick as possible but give you all the important details, so these elements will be covered throughout this presentation. So these are our core objectives for twenty twenty-four. We want to make sure that each of our events have some aspect of each of these objectives. So by providing a platform for local artists and performers to showcase their talents as well as creating opportunities for small businesses to thrive through vendor markets and event partnerships, it just shows that the city is committed to local talent, culture, and economic development. You know, for some of these individuals, this is their passion, and some of them, it's their main source of income, so if we continue having these events, they're able to fulfill their passion and contribute to economic development of the city as well. And in each of our events, we try to incorporate education and diversity, whether it be sharing different cultures, traditions at the Holiday Extravaganza like we did last year, or having multitude of educational speakers at Earth Day, which we just had. You know, there's always something to learn and take away from events. So we have quite a few goals that we want to achieve this year, so in the next couple slides, I'll go over each of them. Don't worry, I'm not just skipping over this slide. But before we get into our goals, I just wanted to preface with a study made by the Cultural Alliance of Fairfield County. It's called the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, or A E P six, and it was done in twenty twenty-two. It collected information about revenue and improvement made by the arts and cultural industry in Fairfield County. When people attend an event, they make an outing of it. You know, they're not just going to the event. They're paying for parking. They are going to dinner. They might get coffee beforehand, so with that in mind, this study generated a total expenditure of thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents per person, per event, averaging, averaging between the local and non-local attendees. And this average doesn't even include in-event or onsite expenditures like food and beverage costs, event admission, merchandise, so we can only imagine that that number would go up with those included. It was also found that the industry generated two hundred fifty-five point three million dollars in economic activity, supported four thousand fifteen jobs, and generated sixty-two point six million dollars in local, state, and federal government revenue. So using that expenditure generated by A E P six and multiplying it by the attendance that we've had per event to date, we were able to come up with some R O Is per event, and that total R O I projection comes out to four hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. And again, this is using the attendee expenditure from the A E P six study. And these are all the events that we've had so far, so if we look to the future, we use that same calculation, the same expenditure from A E P six and multiplying it by the attendance. And we use our goal attendance for this year and twenty twenty-five to come up with each estimated R O I coming out to a total projection of seven hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for the entire, you have twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And again, this doesn't include those in-event expenditures, people spending money at vendors or getting food. This is all just outside of the event. Now delving into our goals, one of our primary goals this year and should be the goal every other year or every year is to increase attendance in our returning events. Twenty twenty-three was a great year for introducing new events. We had our Halloween Night Fair, which had a, an attendance of six thousand, and really, the event was supposed to be two days, but the second day got pretty rained out, so that attendance really was just from that one day, so we're having it one day this year, and we're making it a longer event, so hopefully we'll get to that seven thousand mark with, and that makes it a fifteen percent increase from the previous year. And same thing with the Holiday Extravaganza and Wall Street Wonderland. They generate the same attendance rate, so we want to increase it by fifty percent. I think the first year, it generated about a thousand folks. Last year, it generated fifteen hundred, and this year, we're hoping to get to three thousand mark. In order to do this, we are definitely going to have a bigger social media presence, continue to work with local businesses and organizations, and we also decided we wanted to send out a mailed calendar out to all Norwalk residents with our events, parks and rec events, and all the larger yearly events like NICE Fest, Pride in the Park, Oyster Festival. Each of our larger events allow for local, small businesses and vendor pop-ups. We've worked with well over a hundred vendors and will continue to provide these spaces for them. We've hosted events and partnered with over fifteen entrepreneurs and organizations and are hoping to increase that this year. And as we strive to foster community participation, our aim is to achieve a satisfaction rate of eighty-five percent or higher, and to ensure we're meeting their wants and needs, we'll continue to provide those free and affordable activities for families. And something that we haven't really perfected or tested out this past year was post-event surveys, so we'll really perfect that this year and implement those and send those out to the community. As we focus on engaging the young crowd, we'll implement activities for the youth and their families. We'll produce outreach to school systems and youth programs as well as have a space for local schools and youth programs to perform. One of our favorite groups is the Norwalk Metropolitan Youth Ballet. We've been inviting them to as many events as we can, and they always show up and put on a great performance and generate a good attendance. By providing actionable outcomes like community projects, partnerships, doing events in different neighborhoods, and working with neighborhood stakeholders and groups, we are attracting all community members all around. I know that twenty twenty-four is especially prioritizing sustainability and environmental awareness in Norwalk, and that's also in our minds when we're planning these events this year. When promoting these events, our plan is to encourage public transportation, carpooling, Wheels to You in order to reduce those carbon emissions. We also will be strategically placing recycling bins directly next to trash bins, which wasn't really a thought before, but after we did Earth Day and noticed that that was being implemented, that's something that we do want to do in future events. And of course, we can't forget about economic improvement when it comes to event goals. We're hoping to achieve at least a fifteen percent increase in sales tax revenue, and this can be defined through Placer A I, which, you know, it calculates the revenue generated for local businesses and employment opportunities created, and and also calculates the expenditure from attendees. So this year, we're striving for more partnerships, and we've already had so many. We want to make it known to everybody around that we're here for organizational support, marketing support, and any insight that we may offer to those. And we've already seen an increase in attendance in events, easier coordination with city departments, and increased event outreach by partnering with local businesses and organizations. easier coordination with city departments, and increased event outreach by partnering with local businesses and organizations. And I'll mention some of the success stories in the next few slides. This year, we started a monthly event with Eco Evolution on Washington Street in some of the vacant storefronts, allowing for pop-ups and vendors to show up and sell their product. And it's called Marketplace on Washington. Our first one wasn't, our first one was in April, and it revolved around sustainability, vintage, and thrift, which really aligned with Eco Evolution's vision, of course. And it was super successful. I think around 2,000 people came over the weekend. And we just had our per marketplace, which highlighted women-owned businesses and success stories, which was good. We did have it in a different location than the April one, so the foot traffic was a little bit low. But it was Mother's Day weekend, so there's a lot of aspects that can contribute to attendance. And in June, we'll have our marketplace, which focuses on LGBTQIA+ businesses. And it's the same day as Pride, but they are well aware of the event. It's just to foster a better connection between Veterans Park and South Norwalk. So Earth Day on the Green is probably the biggest success story to date regarding partnerships, sorry. When first joining the planning committee, it was said that the attendance didn't go over 400 and that they wanted their attendance goal to be 600. And because of our involvement and the involvement of other city departments and other fantastic organizations, they were able to get their attendance up to, it says 1,500 here, but I'm going to say 2,000. There were so many people there. So we, you know, went well over the expected and anticipated and wanted attendance. So the feedback from this event has been nothing but positive. And there was so much to do, as you can see from the schedule on the right here. There's always something going on. And I think about 60 vendors were present to inform attendees about their respective impact on the environment and the community. Here are just some pictures from Earth Day. I wanted to show them because, as you can see, there are so many smiling faces. See on the bottom left here, or bottom right, sorry, is the Metropolitan Youth Ballet. And again, they generated so many audience members and they just create a very lively atmosphere. It was just a great day to all and just proof that Norwalk residents and surrounding residents really need something like this, really need events to happen. Another partnership we've been working on and continue to work on is Pride in the Park. We've been partnering with Triangle Community Center to program their family hour by providing our games, our lawn games, and other fun things. And we've also been working with them on their parking, bus routes, and Wheels to You services. And we've been working on that with the Norwalk Transit District as well. If you haven't heard of Silent Book Club, I don't know where you've been because it's been growing like crazy. It's a global community of readers led by local volunteers. We actually got reached out to the, I guess, president of the Silent Book Club of Norwalk, and it was just kind of out of nowhere. So it really aligned with our views and what we want to do in the community and what we want to do for ourselves. Sabrina and I are very avid readers, so this just really was perfect for us. What it is, is members gather in public, whether it be a bar, cafe, a bookstore, and read. You don't have any assigned reading. You bring what you want to read, and you get a drink, sit down, maybe socialize. It's really great for introverts like myself. But it's been great. Our first one was at Space Cat Brewery, which I think about 15 people came. And then our second one was at Eco Evolution, 30 people came. And then we had one at 314, and 60 people came. So as you can see, they're doubling constantly. It just got so big that we are now having them twice a month. And I think most attendees that come to Silent Book Club are buying a drink, either one or two, how many they want. So it's just, you know, creating extra foot traffic on what might be a slower day for these businesses. Oh, and our next one is going to be at 314 again, and it's on the 28th. So if you want to sign up, go to SBC Norwalk. Some other successful events and partnerships have been Game Night. We had Dungeons and Dragons at the Washington Street Plaza, and we partnered with Battlegrounds Gaming. There, I think there are about 40 people, 30 or 40 people that came. And it was really interesting to see that. You know, not a lot of people know about Dungeons and Dragons, but there are always niches around here that people are wanting to take part in. So we will continue finding those niches and providing events for them. We've also been doing Karaoke Night at 314 Beer Garden, kind of going along with our Try It series that we'll continue to work on. We sponsor karaoke, and actually, it's tonight. I'm missing it. It's totally okay. And we also did a new resident meetup at Eco Evolution, and it was partnered with Tony Bachigalupa of the Belongfulness Project. And it just, it's been great. I hope we do another one and continue to do them because it's just, it's just a great place for new residents of Norwalk to see what Norwalk has to offer and meet new people. So we do want to attempt to bring back a summer celebration in 2025. If you are not familiar with the image on the right, it is from the Sonar Harbor Splash, which ended in 2009. We know we want to do an event on the water or by the water because the harbor and the Norwalk River are, you know, key parts of Norwalk. And there is the Oyster Festival, of course, but we want to have a celebration ourselves. And we're hopeful in making it happen. And we're just excited to start the planning process and getting those partnerships and sponsorships that I'll talk about in a bit. But, you know, we can't do it without those partnerships and sponsorships. Which brings me to this slide. And, you know, in order to achieve all our goals and missions that I talked about in the past few slides, we've been seeking those partnerships with businesses and organizations that share the same vision as us, providing great events for the community and making a positive impact. We offer many different tiers from sponsorships, which they're here. But in order to continue doing city-hosted events, these partnerships really are necessary. Last year, we had King Industries, Fairfield County Bank, and Sue Leonard sponsor our last three events, the Halloween Holiday Extravaganza and Wall Street Wonderland. And we're very grateful for their partnerships. But this year, we really want to hone in on getting more. So when working with the Earth Day folks, I found it really easy and enjoyable, which can be very rare when planning events. It's a stressful thing. But it was because there were so many people there that had the same vision and wanted something good for Norwalk. So in order, in order that to have that somewhat seamless coordination for our own events, we've been working with the internal staff with departments necessary in the approval process and engage in external meetings as well with key event stakeholders and anyone that's really interested in events. We appreciate all insight. We now also overlook the E-approval software. We're not approving anything. We're just making sure everybody has everything together because we have had some situations in the past. We are always, you know, offering a helping hand to those thinking of applying for an event. And we can, of course, measure events and event success on, you know, how much revenue it brings in. But I think it's really important to look at event ROI, not only measured in financial terms, but from the community as well. So like, how does it affect local businesses or individuals? So here are just a few business testimonies from local businesses that have had profound success with events and highlight the importance and effect of them. You can see a common theme here is that events attract consumers and increase foot traffic. So the, and on the bottom here, you can see the owner of Eco Evolution, Brad, who we've been working with. He expressed that in just one weekend of the Marketplace on Washington, he saw two and a half times the revenue compared to a normal weekend. And just this past weekend, he saw even more than that. So and I always say, a successful event is one where you see smiles and laughter because that just shows that memories are being made and families and friendships are growing. And these resident testimonies show just exactly why we want to continue hosting events and partnering with folks who have similar visions as us. And looking at them, a couple of words and phrases stand out to me here. Vibrant and exciting, friendly energy, lively nostalgia, a buzzing downtown. It just shows what Norwalk should continue to be. And those testimonies show exactly why we want to continue events and continue making Norwalk the vibrant, friendly, lively place it is. So as we continue creating events in Norwalk, which we will be, we'll strive to host exciting events, foster connection, empower collaboration, pursue growth, and ensure each event is safe. That is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. Any comments or questions from the council? I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Wiggins.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Anna, just a quick question. How, what are you guys doing to make these events more diverse? Or how are you guys looking to partner with other individuals in the community that hosts different events? Like, I know another, one big one is Juneteenth. It's extremely important for the community in knowing what that day stands for. So what are you guys doing to partner with people that's running these type of events?
So we're always looking for different types of partnerships. And I do believe we will be helping out with the Juneteenth event on the Green, I believe. But our external event group really is helpful. We've had a couple of meetings so far, and it's it's been good getting different insight and having different folks around Norwalk give their, you know, recommendations on our events.
Ms. Murray.
Yes. Anna, thank you for such a great presentation, and thank you for all you did for Earth Day. I really can say that it was a great partnership with the city and with the Craig Hoods and the Green Association and all the different stakeholders, Norwalk Public Schools that helped with the artwork to make it happen. I did want it to highlight, when we talk about sponsorships, we often talk about money, like giving $10,000. But when you ask for those big sponsorships, there's something that we must give in return, and that is advertising dollars. And that can do two things. It can cannibalize the attention that goes to our local businesses. It can also mean that we have to take on expenses such as advertising. So it doesn't always do the big impact that saying you have a big, say, $20,000 title sponsor would do. I think that's right in a lot of instances. But I wanted to thank Garibol Jeep and Subaru, who partnered with us on Earth Day. They, how they contributed, they came, they showed electric cars. They did not give money to Earth Day. They did contribute part of their sale to Norwalk Land Trust as a donation. So there was a synergistic partnership that took place. But there wasn't any dollar exchange. But what they did do is they did share us on all of their social media accounts, which did our reach, and it greatly decreased our cost of the event. So I would like to highlight that I think the team, the Economic Community Development Team, is doing a great job in getting community partners in the way that they work for each one of these events. And that's not always just by having the biggest sponsor. So thank you again for your good work.
Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I have a few questions, Anna. That was a great presentation. I want to start by saying my family has enjoyed all of these events and we're very grateful for them. My son was dressed up as the pink axolotl. That was a big splash at the Halloween party, and he is up for sale, just so you know. I am not saying that. But what I will say is, you mentioned the post-event survey, which I think is great. You said that would be going out to residents. I think that's a fabulous idea. Will that also be going out to local businesses?
Oh, yes, for sure.
And then for the sponsorships, I want to dovetail off of what Ms. Murray said. You know, I run a lot of events at our school, and so we ask for all kinds of sponsorships. It could be an in-kind donation. It could be a big money donation. It could be an advertising donation. What are we doing to reach out to local businesses? And how much money have we brought in for sponsorships? And what is our goal in the coming year to bring in sponsorships?
So we have been going in person, kind of door-to-door. I find that is the most effective way to do it. Just have that personable relationship with everybody that we talk to. But if it can't be reached in person, email. And I do highlight that, you know, you know, monetary sponsorship isn't necessary. Any donation is really appreciated. Sue Leonard's in our Halloween thing, Halloween event, they donated all the the fund corn stocks. So that was how they, you know, participated in our event and that source. I, so far, we have not got any sponsorships, but we have had interest all around from partnerships and getting involved in the event. So I do agree that
Increase our zero sponsorships to something, I would assume, right?
Sorry?
Our goal is to increase our zero sponsorship income to something more than that this company.
Yes. Yeah.
One of the things, I know you mentioned that there was a lot of positive feedback. I myself gave you positive feedback. I've heard some negative feedback from constituents about the cost of these events. Have you received any negative feedback? And what are we doing to sort of mitigate that or work around that?
So I haven't received any negative feedback personally that I could respond to. In that sense, I have read comments. And I, I do not respond to them on the Visit Norwalk Facebook. Yep. Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're addressing all constituents' concerns and feedback on these. Like, yes, I love these events, but I'm one of many, and I'm sure we can all say we love these events. But there are concerns amongst constituents, especially given our budget talks this year about the cost expenditures. One suggestion I would like to make is that I love these events, but Westport does a really great Halloween event, and they don't spend this kind of money at all. They shut down Main Street. They have all the businesses participate in trick-or-treating. It brings people into those local businesses, and it's a hit. So that's one suggestion I would make. It's just, can we look at the cost savings before we start building up these sponsorships that I was suggesting instead of spending all this money right up front? The second thing I would suggest is the holiday, the holiday tree lightings are great. Could we do one, one year in one place and then switch it to the other place the next year to spread the love? I just think we need to be more mindful of how we're spending this money. Although I love these events and I love what you're doing, and I think it's amazing. I just think it would be tone-deaf for me not to bring this up, given the budget talks we've just had. And again, I think these are great. I just want to make sure that it really is doing the benefit for all the local businesses. I think it's great that you did the Marketplace on Washington Street. What I would love even more is if these events brought in actual businesses that were able to sustain themselves on Washington Street instead of having open storefronts everywhere. It's a really big problem. There's a lot of restaurants and bars and vape shops along there, and we're lucky we have Brad. But I can only eat one meal every time I go to Washington Street. I can't go to all the restaurants that are available there, and they're all wonderful, but it would be nice to have that be more of a destination. And I know that doesn't fall on your shoulders alone, but I feel it needs to be said. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Murray?
I hear all of your concerns, Ms. Murray. I would say, though, while we're building our storefronts, which we do not fully have control of, but what the Economic Community Development does work to try to fill the storefronts in. But while we're doing that, some of these events create that, that event for someone to see. Right now, we don't have all the storefronts going to, so we need to provide activities for people to go. And I think that generates the interest in that area, and it shows future businesses the potential of what could be. So while I see the problem, I think that our events are part of the solution to that problem.
Further discussion or comment? Ms. Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anna, just a quick question. First of all, thank you for your service to us for a year that you have been with us. I hope we have not been too rowdy and too rough for you. As you are planning for 2024 and 2025, I have heard you reference particular areas. Particular areas. I've heard you say Wall Street. I've heard you say Washington. Um, those are really busy areas, but those are not the only areas in Norwalk. What are your plans or have you ever thought of spreading this out so it's more throughout? The city so that other neighborhoods and other people could really benefit um, based on the hard work that you're doing. Particularly, I think it's called the marketplace. Have you thought about that? Going around in different locations. We speak a lot about Wall Street and we speak a lot about Washington Street. Washington, yeah, Washington Street, but those are not the only areas that really could use a push in economic development.
Correct. Yes, we have been um. Brainstorming different events in different locations. I know Wall Street and Washington Street have been the two areas that we focus on the most. Just because they do get the most foot traffic and we are trying to develop a reputation for our events. So we can bring those out into the different neighborhoods and um, we did have our farmer's market um. And it was successful, but we will not be bringing back this year, but we are looking to partner with other markets that are existing. So I think really, it depends on all the, the partnerships that we make. Um. But yes, we are brainstorming different um, opportunities for different neighborhoods instead of just Wall Street and Washington Street.
Just to follow up with you as you were talking, the little light bulb went off in my head. Um. I think it's St. Philip's Church. I think quarterly they have the youth um, marketplace. And there are um, young people, I believe they're under the age of sixteen, that have crafted and made their own things and they sell them. I think that's really great partnership that the city might want to join with our youngest citizens trying to be business people. So that's just something for you to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Um, Ms. Murray.
I just wanted to add quickly, um, I agree with Councilmember Ayers that we, we should look also at other areas. And as a district C, East Norwalk representative, I know that uh, we have a unique area and a unique village that would like to highlight some of their. Um, businesses. So I would do want to put it out there that I would love to work on something with our residents. I think, I think Ms. Murray would agree that uh. Uh, the businesses in our villages would definitely like some, something for our own as well. Uh, we have, we have a great area. We would love to highlight it.
Yeah, I would love to talk to you more about how we can make that happen too.
Thanks so much, Anna.
Further comments or discussion? Mr. Goldstein.
I, I actually think I just saw this.
Miss, Miss Dunn.
Um. I, I have some concerns that I think I shared with you in, in the committee at the committee level. As someone who, I, I actually run arts events, huge arts events all over the east coast, um, New York City even. It was exactly, exactly a center art celebration back in the day. I remember the sculpture race and stuff and, and ran splash. Um, but a lot of those are coming from nonprofits. So I guess that's where I come from where. You don't have a bucket of money that people are giving you. You have to have the sponsors. You don't just hope for sponsors. And my concern is, the first thing should be to develop a sponsorship package. Determine what the deliverables are that people are going to want. The other thing is when you're looking for sponsors, as you know, if you're involved in PTA or PTO or something with that, um. They, they want in-kind donations and it, it's really important that. A nonprofit be involved in that so that people can, you know, make their tax donations work for them too. So I think I'd really encourage to focus on the collaborations with the nonprofits we have. I'm sure a lot of your ROI for events has to do with some income from like Oyster Festival, which is huge. Um, and brings people from all over the place. Um, so I would really encourage. Focusing on that and. A budget has to come before everything else. You know, it's, I, we're talking about the events and return on investment and what money you want. But I, I, I really need to see a budget of where each line item thing is going and what the wish list is. That's my perspective.
Mr. Goldstein.
I uh, I just wanted to, and I knew, um, I knew there were a lot of constructive points tonight and I think that they are. All worthy of consideration and as we. One thing that I've thought about when we talk about special events, and I'm going to sort of put this in two buckets. One is the economics bucket, which is. A lot, I mean, Anna put up some really great statistics about return on investments. And of course, the investment she's putting up, you know, if I remember correctly, those numbers is not the total revenue. I'm actually pretty sure that's the total tax revenue. Um, so if I'm not mistaken, um, so that's just a piece of that pie. I would also note that we, you know, this is a long-term investment in the overall economic success of Norwalk for the future. And as we generate increased business revenue, that is going to help our taxes and help. Really what is the fundamental budget problem we have right now, which is that we have a lopsided tax burden on residents versus commercial. We need to rewrite that ship. Investments like this are helping us to rewrite this ship. So one of the other things um, is that this is as Anna, you know, I mean, this is, you know, her first year and she's done a marvelous job in her first year. I mean, if you went to the Earth Day events, um, I think that's proof positive as anything. There were more people there than I've ever seen and I've been going to that event for years. Um, so I, I just think that, you know, as we continue and develop, not only will the partnerships grow, but also hopefully our model's going to change. And hopefully the investment from the city is going to actually, it's not going to require as much. Uh, dollar for dollar investment for the city and it's going to be that the city serves more of this facilitation role. And, and, and a, and a services role, providing, you know, security and partnerships and sort of as a, as a forum. More so than as the actual major investor. Um, you know, and, and look, I mean, we. This is a collaborative process. We want to work with Anna and Sabrina and Jess and the team to do this as well as possible. And I think that we could and should be all years, see to do this as economically as, uh, as possible. But also to make sure that we are delivering on things that people really want. These events mean a lot to a lot of people. Every one of you tonight, and I am, I'm going to speak, I hope I can speak for everyone saying that we have greatly enjoyed these events. And they um, bring a lot of um, personal satisfaction, but also just. Happiness and, and, and a, and a genuine sense of joy. And I think that we should be in the business of investing in joy. That is a good thing for government to be. We want to be involved in the things that make people's lives better. And so making these investments, and I realize we should be concerned about um, doing so in a way that we can afford. But that doesn't mean that people shouldn't have nice things. We want to be on the side of making sure that people have nice things. So that's where I am on this. I want to take the position long-term that we are um, helping to make these events success for less funding. Um, you know, and obviously this is something, you know, that's going to be a long-term project. But I hope that this council, certainly I am, um, committed to making that investment and committing to. Um, building our model and creating a really successful events model for years to come.
Further comment, Ms. McMur.
Haven't spoken yet and she had her hand.
Sorry?
Ms. Smith had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her hand.
It's okay, it's okay. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to say, I think some really good uh, comments were made tonight, really important comments. Um, and you know, some of which we talked about in the committee. Um, and I think that, you know, I've spoken numerous times in my support for these events. Um, they, they make, as I have said before, they make us a really groovy city, right? Um, and really support the community and bring the community together. Um, I do think it's really important that we, you know, these, these events are kind of like in their infancy, right? We're a little late to the game with these kind of events, you know, I, I, you know, I have family all over the country and I've visited uh, many places where, you know. People have these events and, um, and so I'm glad that we're doing them, but I do think it's important that we're looking to the future. You know, we have more of an investment now as we're getting started. Um, but those sponsorships in the future are going to be really important to sustain this, this, um, these type of events. And uh, to support our, our businesses. So um, I just. Oh, and I, and I do, you know, just want to say, getting back to the item that we are voting on, which is um. The um, contract with ARC for their um, their services over the next three years. I just want to say that um, they have really done an excellent job uh, in all of their, um, in all of the events. They bring a professionalism that um, is really incredible. They, and I think, you know, people tend to think they're very expensive. They're a local community. I mean, their community, um, they're right here in Norwalk. Uh, but they own all of their equipment. They bring it all in and they don't have to rent it. So, so everything is really upfront. Um, and so I can't speak uh, more um. Positively about uh, their professionalism and how they, they really elevate the events.
Smith, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I wanted to point out that Rebel Daughter is having their Rebel Daughter Day on May eighteenth. And that's another great partnership that I think we should look into in the future if we haven't already. Um, I'm going to vote yes for this tonight, but I want to explain why. I think that these events are fabulous. They don't need to demean any of them. As I stated, my family and I enjoy them thoroughly. I think they're very important for the community. Even if they don't bring in business, which I hope that they do for our local businesses. I do think that it's important to have those community events to have a sense of togetherness. I'm going to vote for it this time, but I am hoping that we really see that ROI increase and that sponsorship increase. The cost of these events should not solely fall on the city. Um, and I agree that this is an economic driver. And we do need to look at other avenues of income um, besides the tax burden. And so I'm open to this and we are in our infancy. I think we need to start small and grow. And I think what we did was start big and go bigger. And, and that's my concern in this. Um, I did have people come up to me and say, oh my God, you're spending seventy-five thousand or ninety-five thousand dollars on stage and lighting. Is that necessary? I don't have a good answer for that. Um, so that's my hesitation, but I am going to vote yes on this. We do support what you're doing. I think you have a lot of great ideas, a lot of energy, and I always support that. Let's continue to be creative and go out there and get those sponsorships and partnerships.
Further discussion, Mr. Uh. Mr. Seed.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I was kind of um, torn on this in committee because of the budget, of course. Uh, but when we pass the budget and um, this is kind of in the budget that we just passed. Also, um, we also just passed um, on the consent calendar, um. The contract with Place Your Lives that is going to give us data to help us improve and, and help us see where we are with these events. And also they might help us um, get more sponsorships because we could go to potential sponsors and say, hey, this is going to be what you get for your investment. There's so many people you reach, um, and so on and so on. So, um, I think it wouldn't be wise to not fund the events. Um, or like the sounded events, um, because they're not going to get our bang for our buck that we just approved of for Place Your La- Place Your Lives because it can't give us data if we don't do the event. Um, so that's, that's why I'm um, voting yes, but also in committee, I asked, this is a three-year contract. Uh, but it is contingent on budget approval um, for the next year. So if next year, we don't put the money in budget in economic and community development. They can't continue this contract. So it doesn't tie us down to the three years. It just helps so that they don't have to come every year as long as there's funding in the budget. Um, so that's why I'm voting yes, because I do agree with the funding, um, but we already approved that. And also, um, we've, we approved the uh, money for a contract that's going to help us get the more, the better sponsorships. And help us really gauge the success of these events and the impact that it has on our community and business.
Mr. Freyer, I believe you had your.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points here. First of all is that. You, I, I did a little research on, on uh, the cost of some of these events and spoke to uh, somebody that is in the, in the industry. And they were pretty uh, astounded uh, by the uh, the, the uh. Inexpensive nature of, of this, of our, our spending on this for the, what we're getting for uh, from ARC. Um, the other thing too is that I also spent some time talking with uh, some fundraisers from. St. Jude, who is one, probably one of the biggest fundraisers there is out there. And they constantly tell me that, you know, if you want to, if you want to raise money, if you want to increase your return on investment, you've got to go big. Uh, I think what we're doing is we're going big and I think what's going to happen by, by putting on professional. Really good, healthy entertainment that people are excited about. You're going to get sponsorships. Nobody's going to give you fifty thousand dollars to sponsor something if it's um. Uh, not a professional, organized, really notable uh, event. We've got the events down already. I think that we're going to see more sponsorships coming along. And I think that we have to remember that this is the economic uh, community development monies that we're spending. And we're spending this to make our economy grow. If we don't grow our economy, we're going to be dead in the water. We're going to be facing budget problems uh, for the future. So this is really important that we. Nobody, nobody can, can sell a product unless they advertise, okay? Having worked for a marketing company, you know, our budget was off the charts when it came to spending. But our gross margins were phenomenal and, and that's what you have to do. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Murray.
Um, I agree with Jim. I also want to say that when you are in marketing and advertising, um, I can say you want to sell commercial space. That marketing impressions are tan- are not tangible, but actual. Boots on the ground, people that you get to an event are tangible. And so showing what we can do to get two thousand people at an event. Shows a business owner who might potentially rent at that business that we can get two thousand people to walk, walk through. Um, the other thing that was a great success for Earth Day is that of the sixty vendors, they were Norwalk businesses. We had to, we actually turned down people who asked to be vendors at the event from Austin, from other places in New York, um, from other cities. So we were drawing so much attention once we got that base partnership together and that was really free. That was our businesses joining. So I think Anna and Sabrina, for all the work to do that and also um, the, you know. The Norwalk Green Association and all the other stakeholders, um, Norwalk Public Schools. But when we, when we get all the stakeholders from our community, they want to come out and they bring their networks with them and they bring their families with them. And, and that shows businesses kind of the heart of Norwalk and that we want to get together as our community. Um, and I think if we grow that, um, that will, that will pay dividends, that will pay that commercial real estate. You know, issue that we have and rebalance that because people will want to do business here.
Further comment or discussion? Ms. Young.
I, I just want to say, this was a very good discussion and, and a lot of good ideas and things for us to think about as we move forward. And as you said, we are in our infancy stage with this, with this project. And I think when we think about Fairfield County and us being the sixth largest city in this air, in the state. And we're with Stanford and Bridgeport and Stanford and Bridgeport has their game a little better than ours with some of the events that they do. Um, but we're going to get there. And I think we have to be thoughtful. And I think there was a lot of ideas and things that we need to talk about and do, but I think this is a great beginning. And I think is, as, 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 what are we, what do we keep saying? We're one of the best cities in, in uh, in Fairfield County. Am I making that? Am I putting that out in the ethos for us? But, but. Having entertainment and, and good quality entertainment and activities for families is what's going to grow us. And grow our economy. And so we have to put the money in, we have to invest, but we have to make sure that we're getting back the turn on our own. And so I just thank everybody for their input in this. And as we move forward, I thank you, Anna, Sabrina, Jessica, for your leadership. And we just have to continue to be creative. I mean, we're, you know, we need to do something at Vets Park because we have the most beautiful sound. In the, and, and if we can get to that, I, I think that um, we will definitely be a destination point yearly. So thank you for your work that you're doing. Thank you to the council for all your ideas and we just have to keep this moving.
And uh, I think one of the ideas that needs to be explored, and I worked on this many years ago with Tom Rich, who is an investor in a city. As a, to follow Stanford, where they have this downtown special services district. They have a very, very successful special services district where they would do live at five on Thursday nights and other kinds of things. That the businesses actually paid for through their increase of, a very small increase in taxes. And they benefited from it, so they're willing to invest in it. We tried to put that forward. It didn't really take off because a lot of the businesses were not ready to contribute. But I think if we look at some of these things that we're doing and say, hey, if you want these to continue. If you want these to get bigger, bigger, if you want them to be in other parts of the city. Let's talk about a special services district where you can contribute because you're going to benefit from it as well. Having said that, and I will call the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Ms. Dunn is opposed. I think Mr. Wiggins was in favor. Okay, and Ms. Shenahan?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned at eight forty.
Good job, Anna.